Amendments to the Norman City Charter. I will turn it over to Ms. Walker for her presentation.
Thank you. Okay, just as a bit of background, the Charter Review Commission was appointed back in 2019, met throughout the year and grew much of 2020 with the exception of some months missed due to COVID. And ultimately, they brought their recommendations to council, I believe, last summer. Council talked about these in August. On August 3rd, you all voted to send a number of those to a vote of the people. And you asked for additional discussion on several topics. We had that discussion on August 24th. That included term expiration. At that point, we reached consensus to send that forward. The appointment process, consensus was reached to send forward the clarifying language that the Charter Review Commission had adopted, while opting to further refine the selection process through either an adopted policy or ordinance rather than a charter amendment. Recall of elected officers, you all wanted more discussion on that and more discussion on the utility rates recommendation. So we've got information for you on those things. Since August, the city has had the opportunity to test out the reapportionment charter provisions that were adopted back in 2014. So I've got some information for you on that and some suggestions for improvements. So recall, the current charter language that you all were focused on was what makes a sufficient petition? And that, the part that you all had the most discussion on was how many signatures did you need for an eligible or for a sufficient petition? We had presented a revised recommendation, I think, on August 24th based on the previous discussion in August. And then council asked staff to look at more cities to compare signature count requirements. In your materials, I provided you with a chart. It's really hard to read on here, but I went ahead and used our statistics to figure out what each of these would mean for the city, using just the mayoral race as an example. And so you can see there the comparison of the different approaches. I'm going to turn to my page because I can't see that part. So, as I said, we require in our charter 25% of the registered voters for the office for which recall is sought to sign the petition in order for it to be sufficient. We looked at Kansas, that's handled by state law rather than city by city. There, they had looked at, or they require 40% of the votes cast in the last general election for the office for which recall is sought. We looked at Austin, they only require 10% of qualified voters. College Station, 40% of the number of votes cast at the last general election. Waco, 30% of voters for office, registered voters. Columbia, Missouri, had to get into the SEC a little bit. At least 30% of votes cast at the last regular election for office for which recall is sought. However, they require at least 200 signatures for each ward and 500 for mayor. In Knoxville, 30% of votes cast at the last regular election. Stillwater, 25% of votes cast in the last general city election. Their council members are elected at large, so that applies regardless of what office to sit in. And then Edmund, 35% of registered voters, this was really interesting to me at the time of the last election, but at least 10% must sign the affidavit that's submitted with the petition initially. And that ends up in a citywide race being quite a large number. And then Lawton, 20%, this is the only one I found that keyed off the governor's race. 20% of the total number of votes for governor in the last gubernatorial election in the city or ward for which recall is sought. I talked to the election board today, and that would not be possible in Norman because we don't have our elections on the same day as the governor. So they can't pool that data for us, so that was an interesting thing to learn. But in Lawton, like I said, it's the only one that's looking at the governor's election. Oklahoma City requires 35% of the qualified electors of the area for which the incumbent was elected. And Moore is also 35%, but it's of the voters who voted in the last municipal election. And then Enid is 30% of the votes cast at the last preceding election. So I wanted to give you all that information. You all had a pretty good discussion about this last time. It's hard to see the numbers that far away, but you can kind of see the spread if you have really good eyes. You can see the spread for what that would mean in Norman. And of course, that would apply to ward offices too. I just pulled the numbers for all of those for comparison purposes.
So basically, it comes down to a percentage of people registered to vote in the city or percentage of people who voted in the last election.
Right. And in the last election, we had, in the mayoral election, we had just over, I think, 13,600 vote compared to 73,000 or so registered voters in Norman. And so we know our turnout's low, so if you want to go off the number of votes cast, it might be prudent to get a higher percentage versus 25% of the registered voters.
I like the percentage, sorry.
Counselor Lynn?
I like the percentage of the people that actually participated. And I do think that it should be higher than any of these. You want it to be possible, but you don't want it to be just easy. That just causes chaos all the time, too. But it does need to be achievable. So even if you did it higher than 50% of what voted in the last election, I would, somewhere 50% or higher, that'd be good, something like that.
Counselor Holman?
I guess my only reservation about basing on the last election is, just like in a mayoral election, every three years, maybe four if we change it, but every three years, we do see, citywide, that's roughly 6,000 new people that have, based on about 2,000 per year population growth that we see historically. And so you'd be basing it off of an election that took place three years ago potentially, you know, depending on when the recall happened, and based off of a lower population potentially than we had then. So that'd be my only, is that an accurate number anymore, who voted in the last election a couple of years ago? But I would be, I mean, I would be open for sure to doing it based off of that. I'd want to see it be, I even wouldn't mind doing something like 100% of, just however many votes were cast in that election last time, that's how many signatures you would need to initiate a recall perhaps. It does seem that the other two largest cities in the metro area, next to us, Oklahoma City and Edmund, they have, looks like higher threshold of signatures needed than we do. I guess I'd be interested to see what Tulsa, what theirs is, if they have one. But I don't have a whole lot of problem with the way we have it now, but I'd be okay with looking at it being based on last election, just taking into consideration, is that last election number reflective of our current population, current number of registered voters in that ward maybe, or citywide, so, anyway.
Counselor Hall?
Yeah, I found it interesting to take a look at the chart and just see, you know, what the differences are across the board. And while I think I share most of the sentiments of Councilmember Holman, it just feels so subjective to me to base it on the last election for precisely the reasons that you listed. So, for example, if you go to 2020, which was the last ward, even ward election, my election, the voter turnout was really low. If you go back a year when it was a mayoral election, because of the interest in the mayor's race, the participation at the ward level was much higher. And so that doesn't seem to be really the most objective assessment of, you know, the voting electorate. We don't have any control over whether people choose their option to vote, but they are registered voters and they are eligible to vote. And it just makes much more sense to me to base it off of that. And to make it challenging, I mean, there should be a really good reason why you're trying to recall an elected official, especially when our terms are so short. They're only two years, with the exception of the mayor.
Which is only three.
Yeah. So that, that part really does concern me because if we just look at the arc of, you know, what has been going on in our community over the last four to six years, it changes, I mean, the election that happened, the nature of the election that happened last year is going to be completely different than the nature of the election this year. And so it's like we're using a standard that's already not valid for the current election cycle. So it seems to me that we might be more prudent to have it based on those who have actually registered to vote and, you know, adjust our percentages there. Because it just seems so arbitrary to base it on an election that was two years ago or three years ago, and the circumstances have changed considerably, and even the whole reason for wanting to do a recall.
Counselor Pico?
Yeah, I think further left point, that started to factor in, factor in the university and the fact that, you know, kids that might have voted in something two years ago have graduated, moved on to another city at that point. So I really, I think this is with what Councilmember Hall here to say, my votes for the registered voters and not what was in the last election.
Counselor Studdling?
So just for clarification, these numbers that you have up here on the far right, that is, that's saying that if we based it on the number of registered voters, like if we were recalling mayor, that's the number of signatures that would be required to recall the mayor based off of registered voters?
That top line is, our current requirement would be just over 18,000 signatures because that represents 25% of the registered voters citywide. Some of these are counting the votes cast. And so you'll see lower numbers tied to those. I pulled the number of votes that were cast back in that last mayoral election, which was just over 13,000, I believe. And so those numbers where the cities were indicating it was tied to the number of votes cast, those numbers are based on that 13,000.
But currently, our charter says it's 25% of those who voted in that race the last time?
It's registered voters.
Oh, so it would just be keeping it the same then?
Yeah, so that's that top line.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. I thought it was, okay.
So that's 72,618 from 2018?
2019.
I agree with, with these guys back here that which should be the registered thing. Because we do, we have a lot of change in Norman and people coming in and out. And as short as our election cycles are, it just doesn't make sense.
Looking at this though, right now, you have to get 5,000 more people to participate to recall somebody than even participate to elect them. That doesn't really make a lot of sense. They had the opportunity to vote, but you have to get more people to sign a signature. Right now, I have to have over 18,000, and only 13,000 people participated in the election. So why do we need to get more people, a significant chunk of people, than what even elected an official in the first place? Because that was, that's 10,000 something more votes than what I believe you received. I don't, I don't remember that you actually received, but 13,000, you got more than 50%.
Recall shouldn't be an easy thing. I mean, we have been at short terms. And if it's bad enough for a recall to be justified, then it shouldn't be hard to get that many signatures.
I assure you that it is difficult. As working on that and trying to get signatures, it is very difficult. And, I mean, like it or not, you saw the movement that came through and worked on it and had hundreds and hundreds of volunteers and people working diligently for the time allowed. And whether they came up short or whether it was struck down by the Supreme Court, either way, it was a massive, massive effort. And while there should be some balance here, it shouldn't, that was a mountain so hard to climb, it was almost impossible task from the get-go.
Well, perhaps there should have been a better reason to seek recall.
Well, that is opinion.
It is.
It is.
That's why I don't think it should be.
That is opinion. There are plenty of thousands and thousands of people that think it was very legitimate to seek recall. And the thousands and thousands of people, you know, they'll have their opportunity here in a month or so. But it should still be a possibility from the get-go. So if you're going to keep it at the registered voters, that percentage is very high. You shouldn't, like I said, if you're having turnout of 13,000 in a mayoral election, which might have been one of the higher numbers, you shouldn't have to have 18,000 people to recall that. That is, it just makes no sense. If you wanted to do it 100% of the people that, at least that would make more sense. That you have to reach the number of people that voted.
Counselor Hall?
I just respectfully disagree. And it should be difficult to recall an elected official. Maybe, maybe being clear about what the expectation is to recall an elected official would motivate people to go vote. You know, that, I think that's part of the conversation we should be having, is how do we motivate people to go vote and take their responsibility seriously for electing their local officials, where their ability to participate and engage in local government is, you know, the easiest access they have to making change in their community, much more than at the state level or at the federal level. And so, again, I just, to me, it just seems like if you're going to be objective about this, and I totally support the concept of our voters being able to have a recall election if they so desire. But I think it should be 25% of the people who are eligible to vote. And yes, that's a really high bar, but it should be. And when you're recalling an elected official, even if you chose to set out the last time around, you should be motivated. And to get 25% of the community to want to recall someone should not be difficult. That's actually quite a low bar.
Lower than Oklahoma City and Edmund?
So that's, that's how I see it.
Okay. Counselor Holman?
Yeah, so in Oklahoma City, there says at least 35% of qualified electors. What does that necessarily mean?
People registered to vote and who live in the area for which recall is sought.
So it would take 25,000 signatures to recall the mayor of Oklahoma City based off their last mayoral election?
No, that would take 25,000 signatures in Norman, based on our last election, if we were to do 35%.
Oh, so the column on the right is for Norman if we follow the guideline to.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
Okay, yeah. Well, I mean, it seems like, again, you have a lower than the threshold for what the two other larger cities in our area, Oklahoma City and Edmund, what they have to do a recall. And it's a tough deal because, I mean, on one hand, I do, I see Counselor Lynn's point about, you know, requiring X amount more signatures than number of people voted. But at the same time, you know, 72,000 people had the opportunity to vote in the mayoral election. They had the right to, they were registered to do so. And for whatever reason, they chose not to. Even in the governor's election, you got 45,000 votes out of Norman. So, I mean, almost half the registered voters in Norman didn't even vote then. So like, I don't even know what these folks are doing. Or what they vote on if they don't even vote in that one. So, so it, to me, I don't, I don't think it should be easy to recall. It shouldn't be easier to recall than it is to get elected, that's for sure. So I guess when in doubt for me, I would err on the side of leaving it the way it is, considering other cities in our area have higher thresholds that are similar. You know, Oklahoma City's bigger, Edmund's a little bit smaller. But if there doesn't seem to be a real right answer that I can identify, one that I'd be wanting to change what we have over it, at least currently, unless I hear some of them convincing.
Counselor Pico?
Yeah, in that same light, I'd kind of look at the larger cities. Ms. Walker, were you able to find out what Tulsa does?
I don't believe they had any recall provisions. And under state law, there is no right to recall unless it's in your charter. So I don't think they had that issue. That's my recollection. I did look at Tulsa and I would have included that they had.
Yeah, because I'm in the same mode. I mean, the larger cities obviously have the larger threshold. I mean, because they're, they're more visible, they're more, more volatile in terms of just how local politics we have in their cities. So I think, yeah, I'm going to stick with registered voters. I'm still the same vote, so.
Okay. All right, well, it seems like the majority of the consensus here is that unless there's a better option, which we haven't identified, leaving that as is. But as we will see, there's still more to talk about with the recall effort to clean up. But for that threshold, it sounds like we're going to leave it at what it currently is.
Yeah, and you all reached pretty good consensus on the other recall provisions. So we're working on drafting that language and bring back to council for election. So, the next piece we were going to talk about, let's skip forward a little slide, here we go. Is municipally owned utilities. We all know the sad story of our charter in utilities. Due to council's action back in the 70s, we have had to live with this provision that says any increase in utility rates within our control have to be submitted to the voters for approval or rejection. The Charter Review Commission recommended that staff provide a rate study of each utility annually, and then that council would submit rate increases for one or more utilities based on that rate study at the next council election. And then special elections would be allowed for unexpected needs. And this is that language. So, I swear I'm hitting it once. So when we talked about this in late August, council expressed an interest in exploring the possibility of submitting a question to the voters to allow council to adopt some modest increase, whatever level that is, while preserving the right of the voters to vote for larger increases. The 2013 Charter Review Commission actually recommended language that would have allowed council to adopt annual rate increases of up to 3% without a vote of the residents. At our last discussion, you all discussed maybe tying it to the Consumer Price Index. Lawton does that. They adopted a resolution in 2002 that uses that as their basis for rate increases. The CPI has a lot of different indices, and they represent primarily changes in prices for things that are purchased by urban households. It does include user fees, but it's not necessarily representative of an increase in cost to us. It's an increase in whatever users are paying across the country. So I looked at the CPI, they haven't released the December data yet, but from November 2020 to November 2021, the CPI for specifically for water sewer and trash collection services was 3.5%. So in this example, if you use the CPI from those states, you would be allowed to adopt a rate increase of up to 3.5% prior to going to the voters.
What if, I mean, I'm sure the CPI fluctuates. Crack is not always 0.5%. I would be comfortable with following the CPI so it's objective, but then limiting it at 3%. So we could never go higher than that.
Agreed, yeah.
Counselor Holman?
Chris, if you recall our last rate increase, was it, I can't recall the percent which we increased by. I was thinking like five, but maybe more, well.
It was double digits.
The water itself, I think, was 50 something percent because it had been some nine years. And we tried to make sure everybody understood that your whole city build isn't doubling. It's just your water line was 2.50%. But I guess just to paint the picture that in most cases, in the, at least the rate increases we've gone for in the past, we would have still had to go to the voters in back in 2015 and back in 2011 and 2006 because they most likely were higher rate increases than this.
But they might have been because we had that pinned up energy because we didn't do it for 10 years.
Exactly.
And like, if you guys asked me what needed it right now, I would say water needs a 3.5%. That'd be, it needs more than that. But I would, I could hold trash this year, sanitation, and wastewater, same. We're really close. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't come forth wanting requesting for those two funds. Just the water is the one that's covered right now.
Sorry, with a combination of what the last CRC recommended, I love the idea of some sort of commission or that reviews it every year. And so where you would report to them and say, here's what I recommend. And if it's under the 3%, we do it. And then if, you know, you say we don't need one this year, then we don't need one this year. So I love the citizen input piece. I mean, our citizens clearly care about this. They want to be informed. They want to have a say in it. But I think if we have the commission and not have the ability to raise it when it's under 3%, we already get accusations of voter fatigue in Norman. I mean, they'd be voting every year instead of just, and then again, if there's some political hot button issue going on that, I mean, I don't know. It just seems very volatile when we're just trying to provide a basic government service. It'd be different if this was like, you know, bells and whistles, but this is water.
Right.
And we're just trying to provide the best service possible to Norman residents. So that's where, that's my thought. Where are you guys at with that? Counselor Pico?
I'm in the same mode, and it's really just to keep up with inflation. I mean, not that all other factors aside, if you're just not feeling the current price of the prostitute business, yeah, you're going to be behind the table sooner rather than later. So I think this kind of annual committee recommending 3% or less is a really great approach to this.
Counselor Studdling?
I agree, and I like, I was actually going to say what you had said about, let's look at the CPI but cap it because it's not, it's going to fluctuate annually. So I like the idea of capping it at a certain percent, 3% to 3.5%, I think would be pretty fair.
Okay. Counselor Holman?
Yeah, just, I don't, I don't want to get in a situation where we're raising it when we don't need to or asking voters to raise it if we don't need it. But I also want to get out of this cycle of the city council putting it off for years and years until it's at the limit, and then we've got to ask for a 50% raise, which, you know, is a little bit of a sticker shock to a lot of folks when they see that. You can explain to them that, hey, it's been nine years, and most cities, it would have gone up every year. But, you know, when they're looking at that in the face right then, they're just thinking, well, that's helping my bill.
City manager Powell?
So one of the thoughts, council has minimum reserve balances and emergency reserve balances established for the general fund. Perhaps, and I'm looking at Mr. Francisco, put him on the spot here. If there were a mechanism, I'm trying to come up with what this wording may look like, but in our enterprise funds, we obviously don't ever want to fall below some minimum cash reserve because we have emergency situations. We have, you know, frozen water mains and those types of things. Perhaps there is a minimum threshold. So in a situation as Councilmember Holman's describing, as long as we have achieved or are maintaining our minimum thresholds, and we don't have a big project on the way, that the voters could rest assured that they're not going to get hit with that, you know, increase unnecessarily. Our enterprise ones are audited annually, as is our general fund and all of our funds. And it would be third-party verification that we've achieved some level of, you know, minimum cash reserve that would prevent our, you know, us from adding 2.5% or 3% on everybody's utility bills unnecessarily. So just a thought. If there is a way we could create some sort of reserve on the school. So it'd just be a matter of communicating that and saying, as long as we achieve this, then there would be an increase shown up on your tax bill.
Well, I think if you combine that with, again, some sort of citizen commission to review that information, and they can formally say, yes, council, this needs to happen, or formally decline based on that information as well. And as long as there's citizen input, I feel a whole lot better about it. Counselor Lynn?
Ever since the beginning, I've said I'm totally for this, and I would hope that people would get behind it. My problem with this is just one little number that, and it's, I don't disagree with the number. I'm just thinking that 3% is going to look maybe too big to some people. Even, I think it might be more digestible if you said 2%. And that's, I don't know if that still works, if it's 2% that you're able to do it every year and stand on it as an elected official and take the beating of like, why'd you do that with my water bill? I mean, those are things that I feel like every other city, right, was able to do that. But when you're putting this to a vote, literally, I just wonder if that one little percent is going to make it get shot down. And I really do worry about that. And I really do worry about that, because I think it's needed. I think it's necessary. But, seriously, I, like, I've told people, like, what if it was a one and a half percent or two percent? Well, maybe, yeah. Jumping, jumping that one percent, it might, it might make it go down in flames. I don't, that's just my concern. I want to support this, and I'll be a big advocate for it, no matter how much tomatoes get thrown at me for trying to.
This is saying that it's not, that it doesn't need the votes. This is saying without voter approval, that we can.
No, but we have to get this approved by the voters for us to be able to do this.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying now. If you're looking at three percent, oh, no way, I'm giving that to council. Two percent, they might go, nah, that doesn't sound so bad. I know that that's just one little, but that number's higher than what.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
I mean, seriously, if you're gonna sell it to voters, the less you do it, the they can digest, it's probably more likely for it to pass.
Which is our main goal on this one. All right. Hold it, Tortorello, Peacock, and Hall.
I'd be okay with doing two percent. I mean, I would feel okay with three percent, but, I mean, I would say if we can get anything.
Yeah.
That lessens the blow up to voters when we do have to ask for a potentially larger increase. Because this probably wouldn't be, this probably wouldn't be enough on a yearly basis for the council to raise it to meet all. So, I would, but that, so maybe that means only every five years or every ten years, we ask for a twenty percent of voters increase or something like that, instead of having to ask for fifty. So, I mean, I'd be willing to go to two percent if we thought that could improve the chances that voters would be okay with it.
Mr. Mattingly, do you feel like two percent would be helpful?
Yeah, I still like up to three, but not guaranteed at three. I think we should come to that committee or to you guys and show the case, and if the case shows a one percent, then you only approve a one percent. Not, it shouldn't be an automatic three or three point three. It should be, but up to that amount. I graphed over the last eight years, nine years, and I think it's been averaging a three point three percent increase in my expenses a year, so. Maybe the last eight are just high. I don't know, but it's a good linear fit. Three point three percent is about what we're seeing every year. So we're getting behind, and then when we have the vote, we have to play catch-up.
Councilor Tortorello?
No, I agree with Mr. Mattingly, and, you know, when we presented to the voters, and I agree with everyone here, I think three percent's a little high. That arbitrary number, we can always change that tonight, and why not start with one point five percent and see where it goes? But we do have a three percent cap. If we need to get that bar, if cost expense exceeds, we'll be taken. Is that correct?
Yeah, up to that amount is up to your time.
Yes.
Yeah. But if you look at the votes, and we bring this forward, and you say, looks like you only need a one point two percent, then that's all we would go with.
Okay, I'm for that.
And this year, sanitation and wastewater, I would be saying a zero. We'll hold on. Right, this year. So I would come to you and say, we don't need one this year for those two funds.
Yeah, like I said, we want to make it easy sell to the voters, because, you know, we're fine. We don't pay for water, but we do, I do empathize with the rest of the city that, you know, asking for this price increase, we have to take into, you know, consideration that there's some people that, you know, three percent might be a little expensive right now. You know, get COVID, you know, people still are not working, a lot of family issues here, a lot of income related issues. And let's make it so they can at least swallow the pill. I think one point five or something in that category might be a good place to start. And like you said, we can always adjust it as we go forward, up to three percent, to make sure our expenses are covered, correct?
If we adopt language that way.
Yes. We, so right now, is there a language that states that?
No.
No?
That's what we're doing.
Everything has to go to the voters right now, every single piece.
But it sounds like, we were talking about a cap of three percent. Councilor Lynn said go to two percent. Seems fair to get it elected, but then you're going back to a cap of three percent.
The, the language going forward should be up to three percent, but we should start off at a lower percentage to get it passed. I'm looking at the voters, you know, the wide range of incomes in Norman and.
So you're thinking long-term, but for this specific change, you're thinking two percent?
I'm thinking one point five percent would be a good place to start. I'm okay with two percent, but like I said, you know, we've talked about this before, you know, offline. You know, to get the voters to accept this, we have to start small and then work our way up. But we have language that's included in the charter amendment that says that we can increase it or decrease it over time based on expenses and costs. You know, that should be, that should be put in as language, just to give the voters a good sense that their money is being well-spent, and if, if they need to decrease it or increase it, they have a mechanism, at least we do, as council to look at both sides. Does that make sense?
I still feel like they're messing with the cap. Either it's the cap to two percent or it's not. Councilor Hall?
I just have a clarification question, because now I'm kind of going, okay, wait a minute, maybe I'm not thinking about this. The up to three percent, if I understood what you said, that is not in our charter language currently. Is that?
Is it, so, so is three percent in our charter language?
No.
Okay, so right now, there's no cap.
No, there's, everything has to go through the vote of the people.
Okay, so the clarif- okay.
Okay, just making sure that we're on the same.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, if it's up, if there's no cap now, and we're asking for, if, if council makes a change or the city makes a changes on bullet number two, this is what I'm reading.
Well, that was 2013, the Charter Review Commission from 2013, that was recommended language at that time.
And council did not send that forward to the voters.
Yeah.
So we are still operating under our current, the language we've had since the seventies, which says any increase at all has to be adopted by the voters.
Okay. Thank you. I still have other comments, but I don't think it's my turn.
All right, Councilor Peacock?
I was just gonna throw my hat in for the three percent, but with the language saying not to exceed three percent based on a presentation of annual cost data to be evaluated, you know, as needed. So you put it in the language that, you know, yes, three percent is the cap, but we're only going to authorize what's actually needed in that year.
So are you, are you going with the CPI? Because that may be a way to say, if they only recommend one point five, we're not gonna do it three. We're gonna go with one point five.
I think I'd be okay with that.
Because it's nice to have something objective. Is there a different number that you could come up with that's, I mean, based on increase in just basic supply and stuff?
There's one called Engineering News Record, but it's more construction focused, and we know our costs are not necessarily going up based on construction costs. There are a lot more factors. The Consumer Price Index may be more indicative of price of fuel, price of electricity, other things that help drive the cost of our enterprise fund. Mr. Francisco, I'd love to know if you've seen any other index that's third-party established?
For construction, that is the basic. That's the best one I have. But just note that the expense picture for considering sanitation, I mean, for the wastewater utility and water utility is driven by construction. It's driven by those big projects, cheaply improved, or water line improvements, or sewer line improvements. So you may want to, you may want to consider it as an actual index, as opposed to a CPI, which is just measured by personnel costs and fuel costs and that sort of thing, which is a smaller part of the picture for the utility.
I did base my three point three percent increase I was seeing per year, that isn't the gasoline, the, you know, the basic cost. I did not cap, count the capital projects, because I feel like those, those get pushed to a future year if we can't afford to do them. That's kind of how we work that.
Well, again, like, commodity prices, they go up and down. Material prices, they seem to just be going up, so. I don't know, I don't know which one would be more beneficial. I can see both sides of the argument there.
What if we referenced both and said, we'll take the lower one?
Or the average?
Or the average, yeah, the average of the two.
I think that's fair. It gives you more data points to make your decision on.
Councilor Hall?
Okay, so I want to go back to the Charter Review Commission recommendation, just to kind of fill out the context of what we're talking about here, because, you know, I just want to remind everybody that we had a Charter Review Commission that was at work for over two years. And we had a pretty diverse group of people that represented the community on the Charter Review Commission. And I don't want to lose sight of what their recommendation actually was, because the three percent or whatever percentage that we're talking about was not included in the Charter Review recommendation. What they actually recommended was that, that the staff prepare and submit to the city council a rate study for each of its utilities on an annual basis. And we have talked about that before, and how important and useful it would be to have that as just our process of reviewing that annually, regardless of how we end up, you know, where we land on all of this. I think that's a real key piece to this, that we include that as part of the process, that as the director of utilities, that's just part of your annual review to council on, you know, all of our enterprise funds. And, you know, I was thinking about, we've talked about the whole concept of voter fatigue. We've also talked about, they recommended that this always be linked to the ward elections every year. And, you know, I really understand your point, too, about that creating some volatility or whatever, but, you know, the voters go to vote every single year in February for somebody. And, you know, adding this as part of it, while it would be new at first, would become routine, because it would be based on data and it would be based on an annual review. And I like the idea of having a citizen input piece to it, or a citizen review piece to it all as well, to keep it as transparent as possible. So, you know, I guess what I'm struggling with is how far do we want to deviate from the work of the Charter Review Commission, who spent two years hashing all of this out in excruciating detail? So I want to make sure that we keep kind of the heart of what it is that they're recommending. But I also, just as a sitting elected official, realize that we, because of the vote of the people many, many years ago, for very particular reasons at the time, we have really struggled with providing basic services to our community, because it has to go to a vote. And so, you know, I'm, I don't worry so much about voter fatigue, because they're going every year in February, they expect to go vote. So I don't worry about that part as much. And I do think it's probably worthwhile, you know, adding this piece to it. But to Councilmember Lynn's point, I think we have to be really sensitive to the fact that it might not pass, no matter what the percentage is. And then we'll write back where we started from. And so, I do have some concerns about that. But I am, I am comfortable, you know, getting to a place that we could do something on an annual basis, and then it's gonna be up to us as a city and as a council to really work hard to educate the voters when this all comes up on the ballot, of why we basically want to take that part of this process. And I think that's gonna be a little bit of a hard sell.
It is, but Councilor Hall, I'll throw out, as someone who's advocated for two stormwater utilities.
Yeah, we do.
A public transportation sales tax, and then, I mean, it's an insane amount of work. If we're gonna do an annual election, we're gonna have to hire a staff member to.
I understand. I'm just saying.
I'm with you, but I, we also have to be mindful of these people who are doing the work.
I understand.
And I, I, I know it's gonna be difficult, and I support lowering it, if that will help get it across the finish line. But again, we're not asking for bells and whistles. We're trying to provide safe drinking water to our residents, and this is a great tool to do that. And I feel like if we combine the CRC 2013 and then the last CRC with a review board with all of this data, and then, under a certain amount, be it three percent, one point five percent, whatever, that's the compromise. And it's still gonna be incumbent upon us to sell it, but we're, we're not abusing anything at this point. And I think to make sure we don't say, oh, yeah, we definitely need a two percent increase. We have the Citizen Review Commission to be like, no, you don't. So it wouldn't even come to us until it goes through residents, and then we get the full picture.
Right. I, I understand.
Yeah.
And really, where I'm gonna land with all of this is, you know, taking to heart the recommendation of that annual rate review, no matter what. And I'm comfortable to take it to the voters, but I think we need to really do a good job of explaining why we're arriving at a place to address the concerns of how dramatic the increases are, because we have to wait so long between elections.
Yeah.
And why this could really even things out, and everyone would know what to expect from year to year. We would have a staff review. We would have a citizen's advisory input piece to all of this. And, you know, for that reason, if the language is up to three percent, and Mr. Mattingly has calculated that within, how many years did you say he was back?
I can't, I just graphed it. It's in the LVO that's in front of me. Eight years, at least, I think it was eight years.
Yeah. So, in the end, if we're going to go in this direction, then I don't think we should limit ourselves. I mean, I think the up to is way different than three percent. Up to three percent gives us a lot more flexibility and the, and the ability to prove to voters, year in and year out, if we don't meet it, we're not gonna ask for it. But to, to take it down to a lower percentage, if we're gonna ask, let's ask for really what we need. And it sounds like what we need is more up to that three percent cap.
Councilor Studley, does she still have comments?
Yeah, so, just for some clarification, Councilmember Hall, you're stating that on the CRC recommended that we just review these annually, but that if there is going to be an increase, that we take it to the vote of the people every year? That's what they recommended to us. And I remember in our last meeting, when we kind of all talked about this, we did talk about voter fatigue, and we did talk about how waiting to do this so long, or waiting to get one passed, it takes so many years. So, I think, like Mayor Clark was saying, I think it is a good compromise, what we're doing here, because we are being respectful of what they're saying, and we are gonna review it annually. But instead of trying to get the votes to come and pass this every year so that we can have safe drinking water and a way to clean our sewage and all that kind of stuff, I think it's more beneficial for our city as a whole if we look at this annually and allow an increase if it's up to a certain amount based off of, you know, those things. But is this, can we do a combination of what they're asking with the annual review of the water sewage trash, as well as telling us what you need? I mean, I'm assuming that's all encompassing with you telling us what you need anyways, right? You're reviewing that anyways.
Usually, Kibberly and Anthony bring enterprise funds in April, I believe it is. Is that true? And so we go over at that time, so it's already in front of you every April, and that's where we could make sure and give you all the information that shows the case that it's either needed or not. And like I said, the two, two of the funds are okay right now. It's just the one is struggling.
So the request from the committee then, to do those annual reviews, is basically already being done then? Is that my understanding? Well.
The reviews each year?
Uh huh.
Kinda, but we could add to it if you want to see more information. But yes, we show the enterprise funds and how they're doing, and what's playing on the horizon, and what their fund balances are.
And I, I think that this is gonna stem a lot with how well are we educating our community? How well are we saying, hey, this is why we're doing this, because it's been difficult to get a fifty percent increase in water, and we have to present that to you guys? So, this is easier to swallow. It's easier to budget. Instead of me having a large increase five years from now, I can slowly put these into my budget. Plus, you think, typically, we get annual increases in our pay, some people, so it should just kind of go along with that. So I am, I am okay with doing a combination of the, the citizen advisory committee as well as holding a cap. I think it wouldn't hurt to look at the CPI number and whatever other number it is, but even still with those, I think we should still put a cap, because I think that that's gonna be what the voters are looking at. If we're saying, well, an average of CPI, whatever that is, what if that ended up being five percent? I'm not okay with that. So I think even if we're saying, we're gonna look at these and make sure it's no more than these, but cap it at this percent, I think that that would be good. And I'm, I honestly feel like three percent is okay if we're saying up to, and it's not, has to be this amount every time.
Okay. Councilor Lynn?
My idea is, I don't want to sell ourselves short with the three percent. It sounds like we might need that, but I don't want to leave this empty-handed either. It sounds like we might need that, but I don't want to leave this empty handed either. That's, that's just my biggest worry, especially, I had people come and talking to me in public today about their water bills. And, and this, and they are, they don't want to, I've heard from a lot of people, I'm not saying necessarily everybody's similar, but I, the ones that have hijacked my ear to beat me over the head about their water bills, they don't want to give anything to the council to decide. And I've tried and I've talked to them and I've made some progress with one of these people today that were not very happy about it. And I said, "You know, here's the thing. Either we do a big increase by the vote down the line is you're going to go, "Whoa, look at that," like we're talking about. Or you can let people be on council that represents you and have some say in it and make it as painless as possible. And if you don't like it, you know, vote them out, you know? I don't see anybody voting rates back to retro, you know, cost, so. I just want it to get passed. So, whatever we do to get it passed, wherever that number's at, I'm in full support of it. I just want to do whatever gives us the best shot in Vegas to take it to the voters, gives us the highest percentage to get it passed, so. So, that's where I'm at. I, I don't, I don't have any problem with the 3%. I'm just wondering if the voters, like I said, it's just a mental thing when they see that and the 2 might, I mean, I don't know how you even poll it, like, would you be okay with this, 2%? Well, 3%, hell no. I mean, that 1% might make all the difference in the world to get this done. And I could be wrong, but I just, when I talked to, now in public, I originally, we were looking at some stuff that I thought was 1.5% to 2%. I don't, I could be wrong on that, but that was in my head. I just wanted to get it sold. That's it. That's where I'm at.
That's a good point. Could be worth doing some polling to see what's palatable because you can always, once we get this done, it'd be a lot easier to come back and be like, "Okay, we've had five years of this and we're not, they're asking for 3 at all times. Here's what we've done with the 2.5 or whatever."
It's a starting point.
It is. Councilwoman Holman, Councilwoman Farrelly?
Yeah, I'd agree with those things. I'm definitely willing to compromise to on the percent. Um, uh, but, uh, I would also, I'd be also okay with tying it to, tying our municipal utility rate elections to February municipal elections. So that maybe we get the budget update about the utilities like we do regularly in the springtime in April. Maybe in the fall, the council gets briefed on, "Do we need to propose an increase in the upcoming February elections?" And so, basically, you get, the council will get one every six months or something, whatever the time to get it on the ballot for February is. But the regular budget update, kind of an overview, and then maybe a more detailed look in the fall to say, "Well, we, in water, we're going to need X amount and it's more than the percentage, so that'll be on the February city council or mayor or whatever it is." So, I'd be okay with that too, so voters know municipal utility rate elections will only happen during municipal city council. I've run in elections where there was utility rate on and, or other bonds or things and, I mean, I didn't have a negative reaction. It gave me one extra thing to talk to voters about at the door really, so, I mean, uh, which was good in most accounts that I've had, so, you know. And then, so that's kind of where I'd fall on that. And, and just on the current water issue, I'd hope, even if the residents are wrong that we're doing whatever it takes right now to smooth over any feeling, hard feelings that people are having about the, again, even if they're wrong, whatever we can do to make it feel like they're right. I don't know how to spin it, but so that they, so if they don't go to the polls in April and think, "Well, I've had all this problem." And I, you know, I'm going to talk to my voters about, "Well, if you've had this issue, what we're proposing with this rate increase, part of it is to fix that problem with the metering system and be more efficient at it and save money in the long run." But, but I, you know, it would be nice to have people not be upset about water related issues going into elections.
Councilman, or, who's in your pile, excuse me?
Just the thought of Mr. Francisco, the impact on an average utility bill going from 2% to 3 or 3% to 4, you know, ballpark, what that impact would be on average monthly bill?
It would be around 6%.
So, we're talking about literally pennies on a monthly bill to go from 2 to 3 or 3 to 4. So, we just need to, I wanted that to at least be part of your conversation.
Because it's not your whole city bill, it's just the one utility line that would, yeah. And so, a lot of folks don't fully understand that part, that your whole city bill's not going to double or whatever. It's just the one line or go up 3%, which can be pennies in some cases.
Okay. Councilman Farrelly?
He closed it out for me, Councilman Holman and the City Mayor of Ohio, is that I think the only way to get this approved is the language and the combination of what we discussed, what Councilperson Bradley and Paul have discussed. I've had an earful last week with the guy who's not even in the ward, but talking about this is the last thing that voters have control over. And they want the confidence that the city council and the city is going to take care of their needs and not just use it for whatever various purposes. I disagree with that. I think you guys will take care of the money, take care of the customers. But that's the biggest complaint I've heard. And like I said, they, they just, this is the last, this is one of the last things they keep their vote on and control. And in order to sell it, you know, we have to have safeguards in there, we have to have a process where it's reviewed. And I like the idea that Councilman Holman had mentioned that, you know, we look at it in the fall before the, this February election so people can understand and we can go out there and talk to constituents. So, all the ideas we heard tonight, the compromises, I think, will work. Tying them both with a cap and like it's up to 3% and with the citizens' inputs, I think we can sell this to the voters.
Okay, real quick, 3%, that's what's being said, but you're thinking, I mean-
Up to 3%.
Is there any, okay, is there any stomach for a cap less than 3%? Councilwoman Hall?
All, all I was going to say as far as my thinking about up to 3%, not 3%, there's a big difference, up to 3%. And I think that has to be made really clear. And I think, you know, some of the things that we have all brought up, what we're basically asking the voters to approve is to give up part of the control that they've had over utility rates. And I don't really think it matters if it's 1% or 1.5% or 3%. So, the 3%, if that's what we're going to land on, which sounds like it's actually linked to something realistic that we can go back to and point out, um, that's, I mean, we should be connecting the percentage to what is a real need annually, roughly. So, if that's the number, then we should stick with that because otherwise, it's not going to be effective and we're still going to have to go back to the voters for a big ticket number to make up the difference. So, that's all I'm saying, is if we're going to basically amend what the recommendation is from the Charter Review Commission, then we should be basing that percentage on something that we can support with data, which it sounds like we can. And why we picked that number? Because people are either going to, I don't think the percentage is going to be tied to whether people approve or reject it as much as if it makes sense to do it this way. Okay? That's, I don't know.
Councilwoman Lynn?
Just real quick, if we put this forward, is this going to go on the ballot at the same time we're asking for a water rate increase also? Okay.
No, that's a good question. Because in my head, I was wondering, well, what happens if it fails in April?
Yes.
And would that help our-
Yeah.
Yeah, but different elections.
And there's going to be a lot of ballot language to consider for the charter review election, I mean, the charter ballot election, so.
So, this is going to be in April?
This, which one? The water rate increase is April, the charter review amendments, we're looking at potentially June 28?
So, we're going to ask for a water rate increase? And then we're going to ask for another automatic a few months later?
I think it's going to be tough.
She's going to ask for amendments to the charter.
The ability, yeah.
Several amendments to the charter.
Yeah.
I think that would be my thing. We could even add language that, you know, "To take effect in 2023" or something like that. Because I see the perception of that. But that, that's not going to mean we're going to come right back and do it. So, I think we just need to, we said that because we need to clarify it.
And I think the citizen oversight piece is important too.
Goes into effect 2023 or something, yeah. And that could make it more adjustable. Yeah, sure.
Councilman Farrelly?
I think the bottom line is that if we educate our constituents, keep them in the loop, they'll, they'll feel better about this going forward. That's, that's the biggest, you know, they, they feel they're not part of the process and they want to be part of the process. So, let's do the best we can as council members in the city to make sure they know the data and know why we'd be the decision. And I think they'll support us going forward. So, I, it's, you know, it's education. They just don't see it out there on the website or hear too much of it from the, from the council. And, you know, I agree it's needed. And just to clarify on the votes again, so what is the first vote in June?
The first vote in April is for the water rate increase.
Next April?
Yes, so April, 22.
Water rate increase.
Yes, the one that we approved and we'll still be talking about connection fees at a later time. So, we approved that. And then in June, potentially June 28, we have not set that date yet, but that's one that we are looking at, would be all the charter review amendments, the one we've already submitted and these. Which I believe is also primaries for state elections. But, I mean, this is beefy, so we only, we're trying to get it on the only city thing for-
So, I was going to say no other city stuff.
Yes. Councilwoman Studley?
What, you had mentioned polling. How difficult would it be for us to do some type of polling to see what our citizens would be comfortable with? Or, or do we just not want to do that because we know that our water needs 3%?
That's a great question. I mean, we can ask, but we've got data to point to of why we picked that number. We need to just throw it out there. So, I, I really appreciate Councilwoman Hall's comments and I kind of lean towards that. So, but I do have a question that I think would help clarify the language. If we are creating a new commission to review each year, should it be ward specific?
Like one person from each?
Yep.
So, it's like a utilities commission?
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I would like it to be specific with an at large.
Make sure we're all on the same page.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so I'm hearing up to 3%, but only after presentation of a rate study and a recommendation from a ward-specific utility rate commission beginning in 2023.
Do we want to add anything about the CPI and engineering level? No, that would be part of the presentation of, part of the data to be considered by the utility commission.
We can bring several of those to you. Anthony said there's a bunch of those. So, we'll bring a bunch and show you what, you know, different scenarios and we can choose what's realistic. And I think after, if we can pass the April rate increase, we don't need to have the CPI over the next year or two. So, I think we could even promise not to bring it back until '24 or something, because-
But you're just for water now?
Just for water, just for water, but, and I'll review the others. But I'm trying to, again, sanitation, I'm feeling pretty confident. Waste water, I'm riding, trying to get to 2027. I can make it to then if we pay off one of our loans and 2.5 million start coming in, that'll be our given to loan and that'll be back to the fund. So, that's my number on this wastewater. If we can make it to that date, I feel good. It's going to be close. But water has just gotten itself behind because of the last, we had one in 2006 and then we failed in '10, we had one in '15, and now it's '22. And those are just, it's not keeping it up and that's what it is. And so, that 3 for 3, 3.3% was just the expenses over those last few years. I graphed the actual expenses and that's what it's, what it's pointing up for the trend.
I, I'm not opposed to saying, you know, should the water rate increase in April pass, the, the commission will be formed to start reviewing information, but no water rate increase would be permitted until 2024. But then, what if it doesn't pass? I mean, do we, then-
We're, we're getting tight.
So, we just said, like, if it passes, no rate increase will be, or will not take effect until 2024? Something like that?
Yeah, yeah. That'll be tricky to draft for election language, but I'll work on something.
Councilwoman Lynn?
Real quick, okay, connected to the April election, what if that doesn't pass? When do we have to have this submitted for a ballot?
For April?
For the June?
I think it goes in April, or maybe, I think it's March, the first reading, the last reading, and March the second reading and the first meeting in April, I think.
Okay, so would we have the ability to see what happened in that election before we put this forward? So, we might consider something different?
April's on April 5th, so I would think so.
We have that first and second reading.
It would be second reading the night of the April election, but not really, yeah.
Because that would probably be useful if, if that doesn't pass, you might want to look at it.
Unless you have a special meeting, so I have to look at the calendar.
The April election's April 5th?
Yes.
The first meeting in April is April 12th. So, we, we could change, we could pass.
Okay, I just want to keep that, like, so, I mean, if, we're going to go back to the drawing board because if it doesn't pass-
You could have been on the second reading.
Okay, so that's something to keep in mind going forward.
Councilwoman Holman?
I was also going to mention that if we had to, I mean, there will be primary runoffs in August. If we had to push it back, there will be elections in August because of the inevitable, there'll be some runoffs, I'm sure. Maybe not in Cleveland County, but-
I almost lean towards that, just thinking-
There will be August elections.
Yeah, and a likelihood of having less to vote on, but then you get less further turnout.
It'd be further apart from the water rate election too.
Yeah, but, okay, excellent point.
So, we give a little bit of time for people to-
What's everyone's thought on August versus June?
If it's possible, I think-
I'm for August too, I like that idea.
Me too.
More space between would be better, I'm guessing.
Then we're not sure what happens in the-
Any cries of outrage from staff about moving charter review amendments to August?
That doesn't leave, that doesn't leave utilities twisting their limb too long, does it?
Yeah. I don't think he gets his water increase in April.
We really need that one.
So, just focus on that. And then we won't have to rush to try to put these on the ballot for June.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Obviously, there'd be runoff, if there is runoff, so it may not even be a precinct.
It's going to be a lengthy ballot.
In August?
I mean, for the charter.
Oh, right.
Ours will be pages.
Okay, so just want to make sure, August, if there, we still have that date open to us whether we have a municipal runoff or not, right? Okay, just making sure. And it's for an issue election, okay? We've gotten caught on that too. Okay.
Okay. We're good on that one?
We're good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to more fun topics. Reapportionment. So, we talked about this, I think, a little bit at the public hearing. I maybe provided some of the history and the memo, but prior to 2014, we had a standing reapportionment commission that reviewed population data annually to determine whether or not to amend the ward boundaries. There was a lot of concern back then that, that ward boundaries were being proposed to be changed too often. My recollection is council didn't actually vote to change them as often as they were recommended. But council asked the Charter Review Commission to look at that in 2013. And what they ended up recommending and what the voters approved was a ad hoc committee instead of a standing commission. The 2019 CRC was asked to look at this, but because we had not ever tested that new language out, they said, "We don't really have any recommendations for changes. We don't know how the new language works yet." So, of course, in a year with COVID, all of the timelines in the charter were really put to the test. And I'm concerned that the language has set up timelines that inadvertently put our process ahead of the county's implementation of new precinct boundaries and all. Go into that a little bit. So, under state law, Title 11, which is cities and towns, says municipalities must review wards and ward boundaries following the census and change the boundary or number of wards if necessary. So, it's required, we can't get around that. When establishing ward boundaries, municipalities should try to avoid subdividing precincts established by the county election board. So, I kind of did a deep dive into what the process is for the states. So, first, when the census data comes out, usually by federal law, comes out in April in the year of following the census. So, it should have come out in April 2021. It didn't, but it should have. The legislature is required to accomplish apportionment based on that data within 90 legislative days after the start of the first regular session of the legislature following the census. My understanding is they don't interpret that to mean following the release of the census data, My understanding is they don't interpret that to mean following the release of the census data, but following the year of the census. So that would've been twenty twenty-one, they, they'd gotten it in April, they would've had to be completed within ninety days. So maybe they would've rushed to finish it within the session, maybe they would've extended the session, who knows? Uh, when the data came out, they were out of session and had to do a special session to, to comply with the ninety legislative day timeline. After that happens, the county commissioners then review their district boundaries and they make adjustments if needed to equalize the population. Then, after that happens, the county election board revises the precinct boundaries and then they go about the business of incorporating that into their GIS data, implementing the new boundaries. For them, it's a huge task, they're working on it now, sending out new voter registration cards, you know, figuring out who's in, in what precinct now. We will not get that GIS data until April of this year.
Can I jump in with that? So I loved your suggestions about making it, and we've learned this, not tied to a date, but tied to an event. We're in the middle of this process and we don't have that data right now. And so I'm interested in not seeing that again on an agenda until we have the data.
Yeah, that's my concern is how can we say we're complying with twenty dash one oh one, which says we should try to avoid subdividing precincts when we've made our decision before we even know when, what the precincts are. So that's a challenge and this year is just more challenging than it would've been. But typically, uh, if things had gone normally, he, he, I had Bill Pretty at the election board pull their twenty-ten census process and he said they adopted their new precinct boundaries, the data came out in April twenty eleven, they had adopted their new precinct boundaries by November because they wanted them implemented for, for the, the elections in the following year. Um, so yeah, that would be my recommendation is, is to try and tie it to an, an event occurring, not when we think it will occur and not, you know, as we've learned through this, that even the federal deadlines don't necessarily get followed in a pandemic. So, um, it would just be, it would enable us to, to have that flexibility when things go awry. Uh, so this is what our charter says and that's, uh, that they shall meet to review and make recommendations on ward, ward boundaries during the last quarter of the year prior to the release of the census. Not sure what they're reviewing when the census data hasn't come out yet. And continuing through the release of the final census. And it says that the committee should be appointed six months prior to the issuance of the census, the year of the issuance of the census. So here, twenty twenty, the census data was collected, like I said, the federal deadline is, would've been April twenty twenty-one. We didn't actually get that data until August and I don't think we even got it in a format we could really use until early, early September. Uh, the county election board, like I said, would typically have been done by twenty twenty-one, but now we won't get that until April. So the primary issues are, we've got a committee that has nothing to review, yet they're required to meet. To do what, I'm not sure. Um, and then putting our process ahead of the state. So my suggestion would be to tie it to events, like I said, appoint the committee within sixty days of the release of the census data. We know during that sixty days, the legislature's gonna be doing their thing, then the county commissioners will start doing theirs. And then, um, the election board will start drawing precincts. But they would at least be appointed and have their initial meeting prior to that, being able to get that information and actually use it. And then tie their deadline for completion to the election board's process so that we, we are done in so many months after the precincts have been drawn. And that way we can actually make a good faith effort to not split the precincts. Uh, and then, you know, Mayor, you, you gave a great segue to this, but, uh, that maybe look, uh, wanted to look at a path to ensure that these new precincts that we know we're not getting till April could be considered before we adopted the new boundaries, based on the twenty twenty data. It concerns me, I, I hate to, we have to publish notice before we, we take these forward after the last meeting where you all ultimately recommended to move forward with their recommendation, no one was really happy about it. You know, we were all, everyone's a little concerned. Uh, and so I think it might behoove us to go back and, and appoint a committee to look at it based on both the twenty twenty data and the election precinct data, so we can, we can try not to split the precincts.
So how do we stop the process going forward since we already have one step of the approval done? Cause I'm seeing, again, lots of head nods and I know I personally am comfortable appointing a new commission and starting over.
So I think what you did last time was you adopted the resolution of the reapportionment ad hoc committee. And so what I think we would do is bring another resolution forward to say, acknowledge we did that, but get, now we know these precincts are going to be released in April. And so council supports, uh, appointing a new commission or committee and having them convene in April to, to look at the, the new precinct maps.
Can we also suggest, like, if we're going to do that, it's either all or nothing with the people, meaning a completely whole new committee or it has to be the same people?
That's what I was gonna raise today, is, is what that means if we go forward with this, which I support, is just like last time, to clarify, I didn't pull these names out of a hat, they came from council members. So now would be the time to start thinking about who will serve on this.
But I'm saying, if, even if we are elect, selecting our own candidate, like, I, I'm saying if he selected his same person that he already selected, I don't think that that would be fair to the committee to have.
I think we need to start from scratch.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, if we're gonna do it, it's either all or nothing, in my personal opinion.
And so we can draft that resolution, once you have the names, put that on an agenda and, and get those members appointed, if that's the direction you all want to go.
Councilor Hall?
Yeah, I, I think, didn't we discuss at the time that there might be some possibility that we would've had the precinct information earlier than we now know?
Yeah, the county was finishing their process, so we were hope, the county commissioners, so we were hopeful. Uh, but on the state election board's website, and, and I confirmed this with, with Cleveland County, no one's going to get that information until April and that's when those maps will be released. Uh, as far as GIS goes, which we can incorporate into our software system to be able to draw those boundaries.
So, you know, that, that piece of information has changed, I think that's critical to the entire process. And, um, part of the, my thinking at the time of the resolution was really trying to acknowledge the work that the current committee had put in and that they were operating in good faith with the information that they had. But I think there's been so many changes and so many, um, you know, outside, um, challenges to all of this that I think at this point, for building confidence within our community that, uh, the next step is to bring forward all of the new information that we are flowing from the state to the county to, to the city, that just makes perfect sense. And that, yes, we do need to, um, start with another committee and I think we all need to, you know, nominate someone from our ward, but that we need to have a complete new set of commissioners to work on it. And I really appreciate the suggestion from Ms. Walker about, um, the charter language really being tied to the event and not the date.
Right.
Because, you know, I think we still slide into, oh, once the pandemic is over, it'll all go back to a regular timeline and no one ever expected to have to operate in a pandemic and there's no telling, you know, what we may encounter in the future. And this way, this would guarantee a seamless process based on having all the information that we could available to us to make those changes.
And federal law could always change with those deadlines, would be better to tie it to the event rather than what we think the process is now because that might change.
Similar to swearing in dates and whatnot because the election dates keep moving. Any other comments or questions about this recommendation about tying to events and then our current situation and going forward with what we've just discussed? Okay.
The, the only other comment I would like to make, and I'm not sure if we're at this place, but, um, you know, we're currently operating under a charter review or a charter change that was made for the council to have the final say. I just would like to go on the record saying, I think that's a terrible idea, that we're the last people, with all due respect to my colleagues, we're the last people that should be tinkering with it at the end.
I would agree, I, I even said the word gerrymandering last time we discussed this because nobody knows our wars better than we do.
Well, and, and it was interesting looking at what other cities do, there are several that, that the city council doesn't vote on the ward boundary changes, that once this appointed committee, Election District Commission Tulsa, Redistricting Commission in Lawton, once they make those adjustments and have their hearing, it gets filed with the election board and that's that. Uh, that's interesting, interesting to me though.
Is it possible to make the change Councilor Hall is alluding to?
Sure.
Any thoughts on that?
I agree with it, I, I think if we're, if we're getting the board together, and I wholeheartedly believe it is gerrymandering, if we're in there drawing lines and redrawing boundaries, I know where my voters are at, I know where they're not at, I know where I live, I know where I don't live and I don't think it's right for us to have any kind of say in that.
One, a comment earlier stood out to me, knowing we were going to discuss this and likely this exact issue, was the utility vote is the last control they have. Well, we just took away more control with that amendment when it comes to ward boundaries, which is a huge deal, as we've seen, because it's such an important issue. Councilor Holman?
Not opposed to getting the council out of that decision, but this would've happened right when I was first coming on the council and I can't really remember what the rationale was. So I don't know if we have some meeting notes from back then that we could reflect on about what we were thinking then. I recall there being some good reason why.
Is this the first time old, old man Holden has failed us?
Back in nine years now, back when I was fresh on. Uh, but I just, I can't remember the exact rationale for that one thing. I remember the rationale for not having the reapportionment committee just meet all the time for no reason, or requiring them to meet once a year or four times a year or whatever it was. But I can't remember why I felt like it was.
Could you email that one out? I think probably the default is take that out, but I'd be curious to see that as well if there was.
This is the first time the council has had, cause it did, the council didn't before.
No, they did.
They did.
It still had to go to council to be adopted, yeah.
Okay.
So that didn't change with the twenty thirteen, twenty.
But that's why it was gonna be council to be adopted.
Yeah, they just often didn't do it.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with it going to council so we can have discussions publicly and all that kind of stuff, but I don't think we should have the power to amend it.
Just not amend it, yes.
Is that part new?
Oh, I see, yes, um, I think before it was, you could, and this might be a good compromise, you could either, um, adopt it, reject it, or send it back to the committee for more work. And that way it was always the committee doing the, the line drawing.
Okay, I like to see lots, lots of head nods on that, Councilor Hall?
I like that too as well. That, that, you know, the, the charter language was confusing when they said that we can go and look at this ourselves here. And I understand my colleague's point of view, that, you know, it may be, it appeared it was gerrymandering on our side, but I like the idea that we just propose that, you know, we have the option to send it back as well at the same time, so. We just, look, the, the process needs to be transparent and, and clear, but more transparent is the biggest issue on why the numbers are moving and, and why the ward boundaries are changed. I think people in all the wards like to stay where they're at, but they also understand that, you know, with the census data, that they might move to a different ward. The biggest issue, like the water rate decrease, uh, that we just discussed earlier, is transparency with voters. They have to know what's going on, if they don't, then everything pops in their mind and, and the words comes out first, before the good stuff comes out. So I like that, that proposal, that when it comes back up for, for us review, that we have three options and, uh, get it out of our hands.
Councilor Peacock?
Uh, Ms. Walker, please, what I was gonna suggest actually, I think, I think council should retain kind of the final control of it, but it should be an up or down, so no tinkering, no amendment, just approval or rejection.
We're sending it back.
We're sending it back, yeah.
Do, just for clarification and to go on record, those meetings that the reapportionment committee has, they're open to the public. The public just can't speak, but they're open, so there's not like hidden behind closed doors, they've been announced, people are aware of the dates.
And then there's public hearings on top of it.
Right, so it's not that it wasn't transparent, people just didn't choose to go. So they're, it's here, the knowledge is there, maybe we just need to advertise it more on the city's website of what we're doing.
We streamed that second meeting, we should've streamed the first. I think it would've been, I mean, you all saw what it was like when you start trying to move the lines around, it's, it's not as simple as it seems. And I think it would've been really valuable for the public to be able to go back and look at that, that first meeting, but it was open and advertised, but it was not streamed, yeah.
Fair enough.
Councilor Hall?
I agree with my colleague too as well, that, um, they are open to the public, but the public didn't know about the meetings. And again, is that our responsibility or is it the citizens' responsibility to know what's going on? I think the city should do, uh, its job, what you guys do well, what you do well, but they, they didn't know. No one knew about the meetings and, and what it entailed, so.
Well, even then, it was a different timeline than previous census years, so even if they had a point of reference, it was different, so, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the issue, there's no point of reference because of the pandemic. Um, we need to make sure that the city leaders, we always have a point of reference for everything we do and say, uh, just so the voters know what's going on, so, I agree.
All right, sounds like we now have consensus on that one.
Got more drafting to do.
We appreciate you, Ms. Walker.
I'm glad to have the feedbacks.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
Is that it for us then? Okay, well, excellent discussion tonight, I'm very happy with the progress, good to see you all again. I feel like I haven't seen you since last year. All right, this is me in the dirt.